It's hard when the.
Maybe I'll be good now.
Change.
Well, you're good.
Um, he actually works for Yahoo Canada.
You have a hotspot. Be connected to. Yeah, someone, someone stole my phone last week, or last week.
Yeah.
And because they.
Yeah, and then he also usually covers.
Yeah, all that stuff.
Effective basics, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, start thinking about.
When you're, play with the old guys, you know.
Good morning, welcome to January fourteenth, twenty fifteen Planning Commission. Roll call please.
Gong.
Here.
Phillies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Sias.
Here.
Whitlatch, absent. Taliano. Aguilar.
Here.
Stand with me for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and equal to all, with every due and justice for all.
Amen.
Public comment, at this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at this time, uh, at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may, uh, be limited to at the discretion of the chair. At this time, please, uh, if, if you want to come up at this time, go ahead and use the microphone. Do we have anybody that wish to make public comments?
I, I have something if nobody else has.
Oh, okay. You have what?
I have. At the last meeting, I was ridiculed for calling something an egg farm. I just want you to know that I grew up across the street from there, so I, I was kind of puzzled by it. So I Googled it. It is called an egg farm and it is called an egg ranch. It could be called the Chicken Egg Ranch, but they are egg farms or egg ranches. Chicken ranch is when it raises chickens.
Really?
So there you go.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm glad you guys cleared.
I have been corrected.
On the record.
On the record.
My goodness for Google.
What would we do without Google?
Okay, now that we resolved that, anybody in the audience wish to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, item number three, approval of the minutes.
I'll move that we approve the minutes for December tenth, two, twenty fourteen.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Gong.
Uh, I'll stay.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sorry, got ahead of myself.
With, oh, I'm sorry, Pianiano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
On the, um, when are the, when are the transcripts going to be available? Cause a couple of us had to leave, uh, early, so I'm sure that's quite lengthy.
Uh, it was a couple hours plus.
Yeah, the transcripts are available, did you need a copy?
Uh, cause the next, it's the twenty fifth when we're gonna cover it, right? So I would like maybe before, maybe at least a week before? Or if you, if they're available now, you can send them now.
We, we can send those out immediately to all of, uh, whoever needs it.
Okay.
It is, it is, it is in the, uh, audio thing if you listen to it.
I, I'd rather read it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's see, where are we at? Item four now, consent calendar, action on all items in this section will be taken with one motion and vote, unless anyone wishing to discuss any of the item requests, that is, that it be pulled from the consent calendar and held over for discussion. The consent calendar is an untimed item and may be taken up at any time during the course of today's meetings. Okay, do we have any items we wish to pull or do we?
I'll, I'll move we, um, accept the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Gong.
Uh, yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Sias.
Yes.
Taliano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
So let's move on to item five. Uh, public par, uh, par, partial map, public hearing. Action on all partial maps in the, in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing, unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items, request that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given at, uh, on any items unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote for each of these items. Do we have any, uh, in, uh, people that want to discuss any of these things separate? And let the re, record reflect that, uh, Bill Whitlatch is here.
Noted.
Okay, so let's go on to item A, PPM fourteen dash zero four zero, Enda, Riser, Forster, Weber and Associate LLC. Uh, this is to approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guideline present, uh, per, per, present to Title fourteen California Code Regulation, Section one five three zero three, Class three, pertinent to a limited number of new small frat, uh, facilities or structures and condition, conditionally approved tentative partial map number PPM fourteen dash zero four zero, with the requirement of a final map. Do we have a motion or?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, uh, roll call please.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Sias.
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Taliano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
PPM fourteen dash zero four zero is, uh, has been passed. Going to item five B, PPM one four zero three two. This is to approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Act and the state SEQA guideline, present to Titles fourteen California Code Regulation, Section one five three oh three, Class three, pertinent to limited number of new small facilities or structures and conditionally approved tentative partial map number PPM one four dash zero three two. Do I have your motion?
I'd like to, I'll make a motion that we approve PPM fourteen dash zero three two.
And then.
I'll second.
And conditionally approve the tentative parcel map.
Oh, I'm sorry, and conditionally appro, uh, but, 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 and conditionally approve the tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen dash zero three two.
Second that too.
Okay, it's been motioned, second, uh, roll call please.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Sias.
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Taliano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
PPM fourteen dash zero three two has been passed. Six A. Up, we're down at, uh, at the public hearing, uh, paragraph six A. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Gil, uh, wants to recuse himself for this item, so. He owns Tellari or something. Okay, PD one four zero zero one PSR, McDonald USA LLC and Max, uh, Macara, and addendum to negative declaration, plan development, final site plan to allow deconstruction and operation of a three thousand forty-two square feet McDonald fast food restaurant with a drive-through component and two outdoor advertising display signs on a thirty-seven thousand square feet partial in the PD dash C dash two, which is a planned development general commercial zone. The site is located on the northeast, northwest corner of Avenue fifty-six on Sierra, Sierra Highway and Early Mart Avenue, approximately seven hundred feet east of the SR ninety-nine Avenue fifty-six on ramp, uh, on ramp in Early Mart. Uh, contact Dana, Dana, are you there?
All right, thank you. Chairman Gong, commissioners, as mentioned, this is an addendum to a negative declaration for a McDonald's restaurant.
Uh, excuse me for one second. Um, I, I wanted to, I mentioned to the chairman that we received a late letter from, uh, Caltrans regarding the project. And with that, the staff would like to have the proper time to review the letter and, and respond appropriately. Therefore, respectively, uh, the, the RMA is requesting that you hear the, uh, the staff presentation, that you open the, the public hearing for, for any testimony of anybody that's here for the meeting, and then to continue the meeting, though, of the public hearing until February twenty-fifth, I believe, is the next meeting. So with that, I, I, I'll let Dana go on to that, that's where we're looking at.
Isn't there a Janu, isn't there a second?
I, I believe there's, uh, the, the first meeting is canceled because of the farm show in February, so I believe the next.
But isn't there, nor January?
Okay, well, we need enough time, we need thirty days to expl, uh, to explain, so that, that would be the next appropriate one to allow enough time for staff to respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dana, you may continue.
Right, thanks. So as mentioned, the environmental document is, uh, an addendum to an adopted negative declaration for a previous project, final site plan number PSR eleven dash zero zero seven, and that is in accordance with SEQA. This project is compatible with this section because the previously adopted negative declaration analyzed the entire site for significant environmental effect, and this McDonald's project required a traffic impact study be prepared as an addendum to the previously adopted negative declaration. Entitlement for this project is found in Section twelve of Ordinance number three fifty-two, whereby restaurants and outdoor advertising display signs are an allowed use in the C two general commercial zone. Because the project site contains the planned development combining zone, Section eighteen six of the zoning ordinance requires that development standards be established by at least one of the following, A, specific plan, B, plan development, C, development agreement. And this project is a planned development in compliance with Section eighteen six. The land use element applicable to the project is the Early Mart Community Plan, and the project site is designated for general commercial uses. The urban boundaries element indicates the project site is located inside the Early Mart Urban Development Boundary, and the environmental resources management element designates the site for urban expansion. And the relevant general plan policies include the planning framework, land use, economic development, air quality, health and safety, water resources, transportation and circulation, public facilities and services. And the project is consistent with the general plan, the Early Mart Development Plan and all associated elements. Uh, this project, as mentioned, is located on the northwest corner of Avenue fifty-six, which is Sierra Highway and Early Mart Avenue, just east of the SR ninety-nine on ramp at Avenue fifty-six. And this is the zoning for the site. The properties surrounding the site are PDC two to the north and the east, and the properties to the east contain the previously approved, um, Autozone and Dollar General stores.
Dana, are tho, have those been built yet?
Yes, they have been built. And here is an aerial of the site, and Autozone is the store on the right, and Dollar General, I believe, is the one on the left, or else it might. And the McDonald's will go to the right at the corner, those of that development. The White River Plaza development. Uh, here is the proposed location, as mentioned, on the corner there, on that vacant lot. Uh, to the north is a stormwater retention basin and property designated for a future church, and north of that are single-family residences. The property to the east contains multifamily residential, and the south contains single-family residence across Avenue fifty-six. The on-ramp to Avenue, to SR ninety-nine is just to the west of that J twenty-two sign.
Is there an off-ramp there?
Hmm, I don't know if there is an off-ramp.
There is a, there's two off-ramps, uh, I.
Well, we'll get that later on, we'll bring you up and you can discuss it.
I, yeah, I know there's an on-ramp, but, but I can't recall if there is an off-ramp. But apparently, yes, there is, and we'll discuss that later.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, a traffic impact study was performed for the project and the entire White River Plaza development. The TIS demonstrated that no mitigation was required. However, as mentioned, we did receive correspondence from Caltrans, which we will need to address in the next thirty days or so. This is the site plan illustrating the layout of the project site, and access is provided from Avenue fifty-six and Early Mart Avenue. Internal circulation, parking, signage, lighting, setbacks and landscaping are all in compliance with the development standards. There are thirty-four parking spaces, uh, thirteen vehicles are able to queue up uh, at the drive-through window, and two of the parking spaces are ADA compliant. This is the elevation plan. The top elevation would be as viewed from Early Mart Avenue, and the bottom elevation would be as viewed from Avenue fifty-six. The project is the development and operation of a three thousand square foot McDonald's fast food restaurant, as mentioned, with a drive-through window to serve the local community. Restaurant will be open seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, fully staffed. It will employ approximately sixty persons, working various shifts throughout the day. The exterior of the building will be a combination of corrugated metal siding and stucco that is treated with an anti-graffita material, material. Uh, landscaping will be established consistent with the development standards and in conformance with the county's water-efficient landscaping ordinance. The project was noticed according to the law. Staff, uh, as mentioned, did receive the correspondence from Caltrans, and I had previously prepared the request to continue the public hearing for thirty days, but now I understand it's not February eleventh, but the fourth Wednesday in February. So that is staff's recommendation. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Now we'll open the public testimony, so, uh, if, uh, go ahead and come on up and, and, uh, state your name and address for our records. You can use the microphone on the, the other side.
Thank you. Good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Tellari County Planning Commission, uh, staff and audience. My name is Max Becerra. I'm a principal, uh, with White River Plaza LLC. We are the developers of the proposed, uh, White River Plaza Development under construction, uh, there in, in Early Mart. I'm here today to, uh, speak in, in favor, uh, of the project. We feel that the, the, the project is well-planned and, and, and it's being, uh, developed in accordance with, uh, your overall, uh, Tellari County General Plan and the, and the Early Mart Plan. The site is located, um, along Highway, uh, ninety-nine. There are two off-ramps, uh, to go into the community of, of Early Mart Avenue forty-eight and Avenue fifty-six. Uh, there is a on-off ramp, um, on each side, uh, on the north side, just, uh, directly coming off of Hi, Highway ninety-nine, and right at that same, uh, position, you can go right on, back on, onto the freeway, same thing, uh, southbound. So it, we call that a, a dog leg, it goes just, uh, perfectly. Uh, it allows a, a, a really great, um, uh, traffic circulation, uh, easy in, it, easy out. My partner and I have, uh, owned the property now for about six years. We took a long time to study, um, what the needs of the, uh, Early Mart, uh, community, uh, what those needs were, and, uh, had a lot of talks, uh, with, uh, county planning. My background is in city and regional planning, and that's what my educational, uh, degree is, is in. Worked with, with several, uh, municipal jurisdictions. But what we wanted to do is, we wanted to create a, a very viable and functional retail center, to serve the community of, uh, of Early Mart. We wanted to create a sense of place. Uh, we want to bring jobs and economic development, uh, to, uh, the community of Early Mart as well as to the county of, of Tellari. We're not LA developers or Bay Area developers, we're valley-based. We're valley-grown, uh, from, uh, from Delano. But we've served, uh, a lot of communities in, in the valley with our planning services. But now we, you know, we, we became developers and, uh, our, our, our hope and our intent was to work with, uh, county staff, um, and to create, um, a, um, a viable commercial project that the county of Tellari could be proud of and the residents of, uh, Early Mart could be proud of. So we worked and, uh, we had a parcel, um, a legal parcel, which was four point, uh, three acres. We talked to the property owners, um, uh, to the east of us, and, um, they, they worked with us and we were able to acquire that property. So now we had, uh, two pieces of property, which we then went to, uh, county staff and said, uh, we'd like to develop the, the center. So from that, we created two, uh, parcel maps, uh, five oh eight two and five oh eight three. And that's how we started off with this White River Plaza project. Our intent here was to make something that, that, um, again, that the residents would, would be proud of, and, but we just didn't want to just create a, a center. So we worked very hard with all the national tenants, and we're very pleased to say that, uh, we went after the best, we wanted to, to raise the bar, especially in, in Early Mart, where there hasn't been a lot of, uh, development. So we were able to get, uh, the number one, uh, retail store in auto parts, and that was Autozone. This is number one in, in the United States to bring them to, to Early Mart. Uh, we were able to bring, uh, the number one small box, uh, retail store, and that was Dollar General to Early Mart. And now we were, uh, we'd like to, uh, receive approval for, uh, to, to bring in McDonald's Restaurant, which is the number one fast food, uh, hamburger category to, to Early Mart, as well to, um, to the right, to, to the White River, uh, Commercial Center. Our goal is to, to create, uh, an opportunity for, for economic development, and I know that's part of, uh, the Board of Supervisors', um, uh, vision. At the end of the day, we're, we're looking at two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy jobs to be created for local residents here. As you know, Early Mart is a primarily farm-working, uh, community. And, um, uh, there's not a lot of, uh, year-round, uh, employment. What we'd like to do with our White River Plaza project is to become that model, uh, retail, um, commercial center for Tellari County, and again, uh, within that, that community of, um, uh, of Early Mart, and the smaller communities in, in that area, Ducor, Pixly, Terribella, Alpa, Allensworth. We'd like to, to, uh, provide, um, the best commercial center we possibly can, so that they don't have to travel to, to Delano. They, everything, can, all the sales staff can, can stay here in, in, uh, Tellari County. The other thing that we'd like to do is provide for that, uh, smaller, a smaller ag community, some type of hope that their community can somehow grow and, and, and flourish, and maybe not become a Visalia, but, but again, uh, uh, have some pride in, in their community, and, uh, bring them some, so much-needed services and, and goods. But, um, I, I'm just here today that, because I, I know that, um, we not only support the project, but we followed, um, um, what county staff has asked us to, to move the, this project forward. We were asked to do, uh, uh, to, um, to engage and to contract out for a, a traffic study, which we did. There was a Fresno-based firm that works very well with the county of, of Tellari and, and with Caltrans, and that's VRPA, uh, they're based out, out of Fresno. And, and, um, I wanted to say that, that throughout that entire process, VRPA worked with Caltrans to make sure that, um, the parameters of the study were, uh, were approved, uh, by, by Caltrans. So the, um, uh, the intersections to, to be studied, um, um, the data and the, and the, um, uh, coefficients, uh, and variables to be studied were, uh, were signed off by, by Caltrans. And, um, at the end of the day, uh, we thought we, we, uh, were able to provide that, that, uh, the, the, the correct factors, and then VRPA concluded in this report that there were no, no additional, uh, traffic mitigation, uh, measures, uh, needed. And then now we just received this, uh, late, um, uh, comment letter from, from Caltrans. But we're here to, um, uh, work with, uh, with Caltrans, work with, uh, the county of, uh, Tellari, and, and, uh, we, uh, will, um, allow the, the, or concur that, that, that we, uh, will need to, um, continue the, the, the public hearing. But we appreciate, uh, uh, this time to, to make this presentation to you, and, and we'd like to, 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 to support the staff's, uh, uh, recommendation to, to approve the, uh, this project. And if you have any other questions, I'm, I'm, I'm here to, to answer anything, uh, you may have. But thank you again for, for your time, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question, is this gonna be a company-owned McDonald's or a franchise operation?
Uh, McDonald's, a corporate out of, uh, Oak Brook, Illinois, uh, they own the property. Uh, they, they will own, own the property, and I, I, it's up to them what they would like to do. I know that we had corporate McDonald's, uh, that was, uh, scheduled to, to be, to be here from, um, Oak, uh, from, um, uh, the Bay Area, uh, but they have been caught up in, in the fog, but I, uh, but they're in a better position. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, so it is a corporate operation or?
Well, this is a corporate, uh, McDonald's, uh, I have here, um, Noreen, uh, Yef from, uh, the, the real, the real estate department, and, uh, Patrick Difley from, from the, uh, construction, uh, department.
Okay, uh, right now, we're, we're going through the public testimony, and it looks like, uh, there's probably gonna be, uh, this, this project will be, uh, postponed until February twenty-fifth, uh, because of some late information we received from Caltrans. But at this time, we're, we're taking public testimony, so if you would like to make any statements, come on up and then just state your name and address.
I had one more question. It seems like you've really done your homework on attracting the number ones in their fields for that plaza. Where would the closest McDonald's be from there?
Uh, the, the closest freeway McDonald's location would be in McFarland, uh, California, which is, which is, uh, about, uh, about fifty miles, uh, south of, of Early Mart.
Well, I think, you know, that this is certainly timed well for what they need in that area, and you're correct in that. It underscores the, the minimum wage here. It underscores the minimum wage here because these are minimum-wage-type businesses, and I think that if there's any improvement in that direction, it's really going to benefit Early Mart, too.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I also want to say that it's not easy trying to get national tenants. We quartered, if that's the right word, McDonald's for about four years. And to latch on to a national tenant, and for those of you who may be familiar with real estate development, it's not easy to attract national tenants. You have to be determined, and you've got to have the right location. And I'm pleased, after months of review and evaluation, that corporate McDonald's has identified this as a very well-suited location for their development.
Okay. You couldn't have got an In-N-Out, maybe?
No, we're very happy with McDonald's. Thank you.
Hung on cheek there, Oslo.
Okay.
Okay, we appreciate the hard work you're doing. Max, does anybody else wishes to make testimony on this matter for or against the project? Seeing none, any other questions on the board we'd like to make? Okay. So...
Make a motion to continue it to February 25th. If that's appropriate.
I'll second.
The motion is second. RoKoff, please.
Song?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
DS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Eliana?
Okay, so go ahead for us on the board.
Chair, one second, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I see him looking at the, it says February 11th.
That was an error.
Oh, that's incorrect.
I didn't know that.
They were looking, there was some confusion on their face here.
25.
Wanted to clarify that for them right now.
Thank you. And keep in mind that we will not send out any other notice, so basically your notice now that the 25th, hopefully it won't be foggy then, so you can make it down here. But anyway, for us, hang on to this package so we don't have to kill another tree. And the motion, I think, was passed, right? Everybody voted? Or did we vote?
Yeah, we did.
Did we vote already?
Yeah. We just clarified.
Sorry.
Somebody want to get Commissioner Aguilar?
Senior.
I just...
Oh, yeah, we're getting that. That's the problem. We lost ahead.
You know, it's unfortunate that we couldn't vote on this today because I feel strongly this is a good project for that area.
I just want to make a statement because Max's tone was, it seemed very somber. It sounded like a funeral. The facts are that the county just wants to respond appropriately to Caltrans. Everybody is in agreement that this is a positive project. We want to be responsible. We want to represent the applicant, which in this case is McDonald's, and represent them as we respond to Caltrans, as well as representing the community of Early Mart. So we want to make an appropriate response to their letter. That's what this is about. It's not about support of the project. We are in full support of the project, and there's no question where we stand as far as that goes.
And I support your comments, so that's all I wanted them to know.
Let's not say too much until the study's been done because we don't know what's going to happen.
I still support it.
Okay. Put bail down as on record that he supports the project.
I did vote.
Okay, anyway, appreciate the McDonald's people fighting, the small coming down here. I know that's difficult sometimes down here. But anyway, we thank you, and we're going to move on to item 6B. This is PSP 10-034. Luz de Minda Winery, hopefully I pronounced that correctly. This is a category exemption and special use permit to allow the establishment of a winery on a 0.8-acre portion of a, portion of a portion of a five-acre partial located in the AE40 zone. The site is located on the northwest corner of Row 128, State Route 63, and Avenue 384 south of Cutler in April. Are you here?
Yes. Good morning, Chairman Gong and good to you, Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner 2 in County's Planning and Project Processing Division. This application was received in 2010 and was closed in 2011 until staff charges were paid in 2014. As noted, this is, the location is south of Cutler. The general plan shows that the site is not within an urban area or urban development boundary, and it's subject to the policies of the Rural Valley Lands Plan, which designates it for valley agriculture. The county's economic development element encourages small businesses that maintain compatibility with surrounding uses, such as a winery. And the proposal is consistent with relevant policies of the general plan. Property and surroundings are zoned AE40 and contain ag, a packing house, I'm sorry, a winery, and rural residences. Since the application was first submitted, the applicant adjusted the parcel so that they are just using the north five acres. So they had a lot line adjustment approved in 2010. The site has direct access from State Highway 63 via private driveways. No conditions of approval were recommended by Public Works, and no responses received from Caltrans on this one. No sightings of threatened or endangered species on or near the site, no wetlands or waterways. The site is in a shaded flood hazard zone, X, and Public Works engineers recommend that they elevate any finished floor levels of new buildings one foot above natural ground. Regarding cultural resources, the site is not on a bluff or hillside with rocky outcrippings and croppings, and is not likely to contain any artifacts. Standard conditions of approval require construction to cease if artifacts or human remains are found. Here's a 2007 aerial of the property. Little blurry up here. This is the northern winery facility, which has a parking area. There's a southern, on the south, there is an existing structure, and the rest of the five-acre property is planted in row crops, and I will have some site photos to show you in a bit. Here's the site plan. The winery protection structure is about 2,880 square feet. It's in the northwest, set back by a driveway. The applicant proposes adding a restroom with a septic tank leach line system and a ponding basin. The applicant also proposes converting a 1,890-square-foot structure on the south to a store. Wine stored in barrels and plastic containers, and the product will be sold to wholesalers and retail customers. The winery will produce about 25,000 gallons of wine per year, and hopefully in five to 10 years, they'll be up to about 84,000 gallons a year. The winery itself operates Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 8:00 p.m., and the store would operate Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00. Six employees will work on the site. Here's, on the right is the project site with showing Golden Vintners across the way. Golden State Vintners. Here's site photos showing the row crops. The facility produces wine out of different kinds of fruits and vegetables, including bitter melon, lemon grass, blueberries, guava, vegetables, oranges, persimmons, cherries, and other produce, and many are grown on the site. The winery building is back here. This is a view of the site from the south with the other property owner having planted new orchard. And this is the building that the applicant proposes to convert to a store. A public notice for the property was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in Times Delta with a 10-day public comment period. We received one call from an adjacent property owner. I would like to add a condition of approval to your draft resolution to merge the lot lines. This property is on an old subdivision, the town of Lovell, and some of the structures were built on those 1916 lot lines. This ends staff's report. The applicant and agent, the winery manager, are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Anybody on staff want to ask questions? Okay, I'll open the public testimony with the applicant. Please come up and give us your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Mario Valmonte, and representative of the property owners, and my office is 5379 North Aurora, Fresno. This project that we're trying to do is almost five years now, and we're just trying to put this small retail, wine retail business in that area. And also, due to the financing and everything else, that's why we have delayed the property, the project, and we're trying to continue right now. And the property that we're trying to do is, all the wine that we're trying to propose is just the organic bitter melon, the tomatoes, and guavas and everything for the winery. And if you need some questions, let me know.
And there'll be other kinds of juices and that sort of thing available at the store also?
Yes, sir.
The bitter melon would become wine?
Yeah, it's going to be wine. That is the one that we're trying to do, product at the farm. That's the one that they're trying to produce it.
I just want to make sure when I drink the soup that I don't get drunk.
Yeah, all the fruit that will be planted in there.
Okay. Thank you, Mario. You have anything else? Any other comments? Anything from the board? I guess we're ready for a motion. Oh, let me close the public testimony according to my helper there, and then we'll go into motion mode.
Is this a motion?
All right, this is a single motion to prove the category exemption and conditionally approved the special use permit.
Make that motion.
Second, sir.
Need to add an additional condition.
Oh, an additional.
Additional modifications as discussed, please.
To adjust the lot line, okay.
Also, still make that motion.
Okay, RoKoff, please.
Song?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
DS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Eliana?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has been passed, and hopefully we'll start rivaling Napa Valley.
John said he'll drink it, so.
Okay, so let's move on to item 7. Item for discussion and review and action. This is a special use permit, PSP 13017, Whitlatch Equipment Company. This is a special use permit, number PSP 13. Is this just for discussion or?
Just for discussion.
Okay, so I think you guys, I wasn't here at that last meeting, but I'm sure you guys discussed it, so go ahead and I read the information.
All right, Dana Metlin, RMA. This request is in regard to a special use permit, PSP 13017, for Whitlatch Equipment Company. And condition of approval, number 23, did require that they submit a monthly emergency log to RMA for one year. The condition also said that if there were any complaints within that one year, then we would come back to the Planning Commission to discuss whether or not to continue the emergency logs. So now, back on December 10, there was a split vote, and staff is now on board, and we are recommending that you recommend that the emergency logs continue for one more year.
Dana, may I ask a, may I ask a question?
Let's go ahead.
Yes.
What caused the staff to change their position 180 degrees?
Well, because staff felt that because Whitlatch had complied with the emergency logs, and they were sending one to us every single month as requested, we felt that they had done their, you know, their duty. But because now we feel that there might be more complaints from the same neighbor as before, we just want to make sure that everyone is covered here and that we know why the complaints are being logged.
Dana, could you describe what an emergency log is? What are they having to report?
With any, any time that one of the employees comes to the facility outside normal business hours.
We did have a complaint the last time. That's why we had the split vote.
Yes, we have had several complaints from the same neighbor.
Just for, with certainty here, it hasn't been several complaints. The actual number is three complaints, and of those three, one, one is noteworthy. But like Dana said, what we would like to do is make sure that if there is any other complaints, we can track those with the emergency log continuance. And that was one of the conditions, that the emergency log would cease after one year if there were no complaints. But we've had enough complaints to continue on the emergency log.
Correct.
And this would be for another year, right?
For one more year. And I, I've spoken with the, with the Whitlatch owners, and they are in agreement, they don't mind doing the emergency logs for another year.
And so we get down towards the end of 15, and we have another complaint, and we're doing this again for 16, and on and on?
Probably.
We could stop. For your consideration. But the reality is that what we do have is definitely a limiting of the complaints, and they are a drilling facility, and we know how important wells are right now. So we have two interests, the neighbors and the drilling, the well supply company. So given that, the complaints should cease, we just want to continue to log.
And one of the complaints was about a building that was being erected on the site.
They have a permit for it?
He just, I mean, he called in, "What's going on? You know, why are they building that building?" Well, you know, they came in, they got a minor modification for their special use permit. We issued a building permit. Everything was done, you know, according to...
That's not really a complaint.
That's what I'm saying. Of the three complaints, that's one of the lesser ones. I'm saying there's...
And that was logged as a complaint.
Okay, I just have one suggestion, yeah. God forbid that this drop should continue, but I know that these companies are drilling 24 hours. Now, I don't know how Whitlatch possibly is staying with the confines that, I don't know how they are, because I know we have drillers drilling 24 hours. So maybe, isn't it smarter to maybe change the conditions or something, or add something to the, because it just seems like we're just, every year, they're stuck in this mess, and it's kind of, you know, weather-related.
May I suggest that we do one more year of the emergency logging, and we will note, again, if we need to come back next year, and it seems like there is a violation, that we will change the conditions, which would take a vote. But for right now, I think the way we have the conditions written, one more year should suffice.
Okay, so I assume that Whitlatch is aware that there's a possibility that, okay, that they would continue. Okay, so...
It's part of work for them.
Anyway, I'm ready to, if there's no more comment, I'm ready, yeah, go ahead and make that.
Make a motion, then?
Yes.
We continue emergency logs for one year until November 30, 2015.
I'll second.
In motion and second. RoKoff, please.
Song?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
DS?
No.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Eliana?
Okay, the motion's been passed.
Yes.
Get the vote.
Aguilar? Only because I have these faces looking at me over here bother me.
No.
Okay, anyway. Motion's been passed.
Only a vote.
Okay, so item 8, Director's Report.
Thank you. I'd just like to talk a little, the permits... I'd just like to talk a little, the permits are up. The building permits in the county are up about 14% for the first six months of this fiscal year. And that's a sustained growth. It hasn't just been a peak. It's 14% is a reasonable, it's not just peaking and ebbing, it's sustained over the last three years really of growth. With that being mentioned, if you had the opportunity to hear the county, state of the county address yesterday by Supervisor Worthley, Permit Center will now, starting January 30th, will be open on Friday mornings for two hours. Back in 2010, with the furloughs, with the lowering of building activity, the supervisors closed the Permit Center on Friday mornings. We had been open Friday mornings for a number of years and now with the activity continuing to pick up, we don't have the furloughs on Fridays anymore. So therefore, it looks like this is the time to move forward, providing better opportunity for the public to be able to access the county, the RMA. So therefore, starting January 30th, we're going to be open from 9 to 11 on Friday mornings. That's, I know that Hector has an announcement, he'd like to talk about his staff and then others will have, but that's really the key, that I'm looking forward to the continued business activity and development activity in the county.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Hector Guerra, the Chief Environmental Planner of the Environmental Planning Division. I'll be brief. Actually, two things. Tomorrow I will be going to a CQ seminar in Modesto. That'll be fun, happy. Then I wanted to announce that I have successfully recruited a Planner 4 for my division, lifting her from the Valley Air District. She has about a dozen years working there. She has, her name is Jessica Willis. She will also, she's real familiar with many of their quality components, modeling and health risk assessments and all that other good stuff. So that'll provide some relief from me and a lot of that work. And she also has, I believe, a degree in biology from Fresno State. She comes from a hybrider family. She's part of Community of Tranquility in Fresno County. Her father is actually retired from Westland's Water District, so she's real familiar with water availability or lack thereof issues. Her brother is a farmer, so they do that kind of stuff. So I'm real thrilled that Jessica is going to be coming over to work with us. She will start on February 23rd, so I will bring her, introduce her at the next planning
Commissioner Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Tulare County. What we had yesterday for Porterville's community plan was another continuance, but I think this, hopefully this next time around, we'll get the approval. And so the Porterville Area Community Plan will be adopted, we're anticipating in February. The other community plans that we are kicking off over the next month include Terabella, Decor, Tipton, Strathmore, Cutler, and Orocy and Early Mart. So it's, we're looking to get as many of these done over the next year as possible. So we're probably gonna end up lumping quite a few of these together just to get through the general plan approval requirements that we can only do four a year. So there might be some, a couple of lengthy Planning Commission meetings on the books as being recommended for approval to the board. Outside of that, like Mr. Washington was saying, we are also seeing the pickup in activity on the permit, the use permit side and on the minor modification side. We've had a really good month in December and we look forward to continued success over the next year. We did get rid of pretty much all our backlog. In fact, this 2010 project pretty much finalizes it. So looking forward, we're clean and we're open for any new projects that come forward, but we are in a state where we could process things so quickly through the process that I think that the development community should recognize that and hopefully not be stalled or anything else that would cause them any heartache moving forward. So that's what we look forward to, continued success over the next year.
Aaron, is there any news on Legosian?
The Legosian Community Plan, we did have our, what we anticipate to be our last outreach meeting. Right now, we do have, we're 90% of the way there with the EIR, an environmental impact report, and the community plan itself. The community appreciates our efforts out there and they are in full agreement that we move forward with the documents we have. So we're right there and hopefully within the next few weeks to a month, we'd have some, we'd have agreement enough to move forward to that final stage and bring that in front of you.
Looks like Three Rivers, too, you're moving right along on that one also?
Yes, Three Rivers is moving along and I think that, too, hopefully over the next year, will move to a position where they can actually get approval over the next, I want to say the next couple of years.
Mr. Washington, one question. Maybe we could have a microphone installed for Mr. Bond there?
I like this.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mike Bond, RMA, Public Works, Happy New Year. This is 2015, looks like it's going to be a very, a great year in terms of, there's a very large slate of projects that are tied to economic development and the community plan update. So Public Works is, you know, part of the team providing solutions for infrastructure. So I think that's our key role and we're on board. We have a lot of other programs on the water side and on the bridge projects, too. So it's a very full slate of projects, so, you know.
That's really it.
You know, the supervisors, doesn't County Council sit at the end of the table here?
We do.
That way you free up a little space.
If that's what the commission would like, we can do that. It's your call.
I don't care.
I'd like him to speak, because if she's got to give advice real quick, she's right there.
Well, I'd like them to be together. Come.
I wanted to add something about Public Works and upgrading the infrastructure. This past week, I had the occasion of going out to the Oak Grove Bridge on the Mineral King Road. The county's initiating some evaluation studies now on assessment of that 1923 structure. It's a very interesting project. There just happens to be a newspaper out in the lobby that has a feature story on that and it's a lead story in the Commonwealth this week. So I think if you want to get an idea of what they're doing out there, pick one up on your way out.
Historical bridge.
Yes, it is. And it's, and they've brought in the best experts in the field to conduct the research and to do the actual assessment of the structure. So I was really impressed. I took a lot of photos out there, got to talk to the lead engineers and it really is an exciting opportunity for the county not to only do the right thing in cultural resources and I know you all know that we like to do that, but we're also going to make and ensure that that bridge is safe and can go forward in the future.
If I could add one thing about those experts, Galvin Preservation Associates, GPA, very well qualified, extremely well qualified. They did a documentary for some historic bridges in LA City, LA County, that was actually aired on the History Channel. They've done the historical work for us at the South Coast Detention Facility and the historical work that they're still working on, cataloging and doing everything they can for the Sequoia Field project. So they are very good at what they do, so Mike Bond's crew did a great job on picking that crew.
What's interesting, too, about that bridge, being that it's the arch style of bridge, most of those were built in the 1930s in California and a lot of those have been retrofitted and remodeled and a lot of things have been changed about them. This one is relatively intact from that same period, so it's really, like I said, it's a really interesting opportunity where the cultural resources and the, you know, the continued use of the structure come together in this project.
And if I may, the county really is fortunate, RMA Public Works is fortunate to have Ben Ruiz, who we introduced you to last year. And he's a structural engineer and he's, he has an award for the, from ASE, American Society of Civil Engineers for last year, 2014 Public Engineer of the Year Award. So we've got a very strong bridge program.
Right.
Okay, any other comments from the Directors? Otherwise, we're moving on to item 10, a German, and I guess, well, first of all, are there any future agenda items that we want to? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to item 10, a German, and we'll reconvene on January 28th. Thank you.